Yeah, we're gonna remove Allen.
He comes back.
That is gonna help businesses in Ward too.
No.
And why?
I'd rather help.
Ask Susan.
I have to be with Susan. I don't think I would.
Welcome to the Biloxi City Council Meeting Tuesday, March 19th. A 1:30 meeting. I need a motion to amend the agenda.
I move.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence. Need a second. Second by Mr. Glavine. Any questions?
Try to raise it a little bit.
You wanna read it, Susan? All in favor? Six zero, motion carry.
To our policy agenda, we're adding item 4A, resolution authorizing emergency contract for portion of Raynor Street between Esters and Division. We're adding item 4B, resolution authorizing emergency contract for portion of Benaki Avenue between CSX Railroad and Howard Avenue. To our consent agenda, we're substituting item 5J, which is for the maintenance agreement with Net Motion Software. We're adding item 5Q, resolution authorizing expenditure to the Mississippi Gulf Coast Resort Classic Foundation, and adding 5R, resolution to authorize a budget amendment to the Legislative
I need a motion to accept the agenda as amended. Motion to approve. Second. We got a motion by Mr. Glavine, second by Mr. Barrett. Mr. Barrett, any questions on it?
Yes, did we? I yield to Mr. Lawrence. I never yield, but today I'll yield.
The insurance committee, Paul, Tisdale, and Ken, I met yesterday with the insurance company on the property, and we made an adjustment on the flood, so I'd like to remove A until next week to have the correct amount posted in the property insurance. Strictly remove for one week through the 26th.
It's been moved.
So you're tabling?
It's been moved by Mr. Lawrence.
No, remove it so he can.
Remove it?
Right, because that way he can come back with the right. Instead of coming with a substitute.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Lawrence to remove A. I'll second it. Second by Dr. Tisdale. Any other questions? All in favor on the removal? Six zero, removal, passes. Any other questions on the agenda before we vote on the agenda as a whole? And then any questions? All in favor? Six zero, motion carry. Mayor's report?
I have very little to say right now, but no, I have nothing to say, as a matter of fact. That's my report.
The mayor, nothing to say?
If I'd have known that witch was.
It's in the report, dude.
If I had known that witch was gonna come true, I'd have wished for a new truck.
Is that it, Mayor? Oh, okay, real quick, no departmental reports. Council report, I'm gonna start with Mr. Barrett.
I just, April the 9th, 7 o'clock, we'll be having a Ward 7 meeting at the new community center on Kaylee Cove, and I believe most of our department heads will be there, so everyone's invited to that. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Glavine?
I'd just like to acknowledge the Boe Ravage celebrate their 20th anniversary, and, you know, it's certainly a coast icon, and I saw several of the council members at the different celebrations, and it really is something to celebrate. You know, 20 years of a lot of, a lot of good that that organization has provided in jobs, economic growth, and certainly tourism leadership across the state of Mississippi in the South. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Dr. Tisdale?
Just one thing. Any word on, or a date on when the Boe Ravage MGM pedestrian bridge is gonna open? I notice they still have it fenced off.
We're waiting for the MDOT staff to tell us they're ready for the walkthrough and the inspection. There's still some items that are.
Punch list stuff.
Punch list items that they're working. They can't, they still have to come to Community Development to get a certificate of occupancy before we can accept the thing.
First day, first Shucker home game, I think, is April somewhere around the 5th.
Yeah, I had an informal conversation with the Boe Ravage about including, walking the crosswalk with their security people, you know, on every hour or so, because that, we're afraid that that's gonna be a problem, could be a problem if the homeless or panhandlers whoever get up in there. And since the majority of the people transiting that, that walkway will be Boe Ravage employees and Boe Ravage guests, we think that it'd be their advantage to provide some security. Other than that, it's all ours.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Tisdale. Mr. Deming?
Not much, other than tonight's is the Covey Awards. I don't know, I didn't see your name on the list as a presenter, which you should be. I know Dixie and myself will be presenting tonight. And Covey's, for those of you that aren't aware, it's, it's an event that, that celebrates the accomplishments and the contributions of many local venues and entities here on the coast. Many are from or in Biloxi. I don't know, Mr. Glavine, if you'll be there. Of course, the Boe Ravage is gonna be awarded numerous times as they always are, because as you stated, they have been a contributor to our, our vitality here on the coast for a long time. If you have some free time tonight, I think it's $35 for a ticket, come out and I'll serve you a seat at my table, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Deming. Ms. Newman? Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, we got a few things. Friday night, they had the poker run. I thought it was pretty neat, they went to five different local pubs, and you picked up a card, and you come back and went up there, a nice crowd, it probably had maybe 60, 70 people involved in that, but it helps the business. It turned out to be a good event. A lot of people came down Friday night. And actually Saturday, we had Green on Green and the St. Patrick Day Parade, had night crowds at both of them, and we got rid of an old Gillage and got an old Keef, so we did pretty good, as far as the grand marshal. And I was just like, Kenny, I often wondered why, when they shot the fireworks, they never used the top of the building. When they did that Saturday night, that was pretty neat, top of the building. And the other, the best, the best thing about that night, it was Foco didn't talk very long. It was a nice short speech, so that was a good thing. And then you've got to remember, today was Catholics, today's St. Joseph's Day, Giuseppe, that's Joseph in Italian, so happy St. Joseph's Day to everybody.
Thank you, George. And I have one.
That was for, that was for my buddy.
Kenny, Robert. No Robert. No Robert. All right, thank you, George. And I have one thing. Kay Miller, Bill Raymond, and myself, as we know, we have a growing homeless problem, and we're gonna be traveling to a homeless conference in Seattle this weekend. So keep us in your prayers, and we're gonna bring back the information to try to help resolve some of the issues we have here. Thank you. That concludes my.
Y'all taking it in with you to show you how good it is out there in Seattle?
Next, we have public, on the public agenda, we got the citizen comments, total of 45 minutes, three minutes per person. Anyone on my left would like to come up and speak? Mr. Kemp? Please come up, give your name, address, and please sign in for us.
Good afternoon. My name is John Kemp. My house lives at 178 Honorable Court. I live in the city of Biloxi.
Gonna make it turn green. There you go. I got it. I talked to the mic.
So, you want me to say it again? I think everybody heard me. My name is John Kemp. My house lives at 178 Honorable Court. I live in the city of Biloxi. Mr. Mayor, Directors of each department, Mr. Barrett, Mr. Glavine, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Guns, Ms. Newman, and Mr. Tisdale, I'm here to say thank you. As you all know, for the last few years, I come in and I leave the complaints to my fellow citizens. I come in to say thank you, because I, again, I live in the city of Biloxi, and I drive it quite frequently. This is a beautiful peninsula we live on. You don't believe me, every now and then go on Google Earth and just look above, look from above. While I was in Germany for about five weeks, I noticed on February 19th, this council, along with the mayor and my councilman, Mr. Guns, are considering a resolution to have a recreation department in East Biloxi. And that's been my pet peeve project since I moved back several years ago. And I say my project, because had it not been for the three, four, maybe five facilities that I had growing up in East Biloxi, more specifically the Housing Authority, I may have not decided to go into military and volunteer my time to my fellow citizens. So once again, I wanna thank this body for at least considering a recreation facility in East Biloxi. The reason why I know the Matinas, the Stefanovitch's, the Fayards, the reason why I know them today is because we swapped out recreation facilities when I was a kid. So that meant sometimes I was in West Biloxi, sometimes I was in East Biloxi, and vice versa. Growing up in Biloxi, specifically the Housing Authority, went to Popps Ferry Elementary in Fernwood, we had to be bused every day. So that meant that coming from East Biloxi, I literally drove, or the bus driver drove 12 miles to Fernwood, and we saw this beautiful city every day, twice a day sometimes. Recreation departments is such an unfair name. Let me just tell you, everything but basketball was being planned in the gymnasiums that I speak of. The Red Gym, also known as the East Biloxi Community Center, we called it red because it was red. The Yellow Gym, Pringles Gym, also barely played any basketball. Mr. Guns, I tell you, most of the time, we were playing cards, or somebody was trying to organize a, a meeting to get Boy Scouts going, to get community involvement going. And as I live in front of Bush Park, and I, I see these 14 and 15 and 16-year-olds trouble, troublemakers, without nothing to do recreationally, I wonder if one facility could change that. And I'm sure the chief of police and some of the other people in law enforcement may attest to that. So please, as you move forward, consider making this happen. It's on paper, let's do it. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Is there anyone else to my left? Yes, ma'am.
I live at 407 Oaklawn Place in Biloxi. I'm here as a long-term.
Ma'am, 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 put the mic up to you.
Okay, I'm here as a lifetime member of the Friends of the Biloxi Libraries to request that we get some help in getting the West Biloxi Library power washed. I'm here, I'm speaking for the patrons and the friends and the staff. If you would be kind enough to take a look at these pages, I have them up. Is that working better? Thank you. Take a quick look at that. As you will see from the photographs, the outside of the library is streaked with mildew and mold. And if you will look at the picture of the outside of the glass on the children's department window, it is so thick with green glop and black glop that it darkens the interior, which is not a very nice environment for the children. And the lights have to be kept on all day long, which obviously is running up the, even on a sunny day, the lights have to be kept on, which is running up the light bills unnecessarily. Last month was a short month, 28 days and bad weather. Attendants was over 6,100 people at that library, the West Biloxi Library. During the year, the average attendance is 6,500 people. And we have been getting some adverse comments about the degree of mildew and mold on the outside of the building, the maintenance of the building. It goes without saying that there is not one of us here today who would have our house looking like that. So I think what I'm saying is, two men can do this in a day at small expense. It's not gonna take very long to power wash it. It's not a big deal, and the library is city property, and it desperately needs to be done. So I would be greatly appreciative, and so would everybody that comes to that library. Would you please get it power washed? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my left? Anyone to my right? Anyone else in the room? Okay, we're gonna consider the policy, uh, public agenda closed. Gonna move on to the policy agenda. A, Ms. Lucy?
Resolution authorizing emergency contract for portion of Raynor Street between Esters and Division.
I'll move that one. Second by Mr. Lawrence. Any questions? Any questions on it? None? All right, all in my.
4A.
A on the policy agenda. You got it? Let's see if I got an extra one. I don't have an extra one.
Right there. A and B, B C.
Yeah, we're on the policy agenda. You ready? You good? Okay, I'm gonna call for the question, all in. Oh, you got a question? Okay, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Seven zero, motion carry. Item B, Ms. Lucy?
Resolution authorizing emergency contract for portion of Benaki Avenue between the CSX Railroad and Howard Avenue.
Go move it.
Moved, moved by Mr. Lawrence.
Second.
Second by Dr. Tisdale. Any questions on the CXX? Call for the question, all in favor? Seven zero, motion carry. I'm gonna move on to the consent agenda. I need a motion on it. Moved by Mr. Glavine. Second by Mr. Lawrence. George, have any questions?
Yeah, first one I'd like to do is B. I'd just like to answer a few questions. I know we're taking a hundred thousand dollars out of CDBG money and using it for side grants. I don't think that's the purpose of that CDBG money. I think there's other things need to be done in Ward 1 and 2 and other wards with the low-income people to help them individually. So I'm not in favor of moving this hundred thousand dollars towards a facade grant. I had a problem moving the money if we're gonna do something. Say again?
We have a public hearing scheduled tonight. Community Development, I would recommend at this point, I think the mayor would support me on this, that we just table this item for another week till we've had that public hearing.
All right.
Well, maybe to table it then.
I'll go ahead and second it. It's been moved, uh, moved that we table B, I second it. Any questions?
How long? One week?
On, on B.
How long? Just say for B.
Oh, for a week, for a week, yes. Well, let's just, subject to call. Subject to call.
Yeah, I see. But I would stick it on next week if we have to.
Okay. Okay, all in favor? Seven zero, motion carries. B is removed. Okay, anything else, George?
Yeah, on F and G, I see where they donated $2,000 in grants, like for, for the pickleball. Is there any particular thing you could use it for, or how's that work? Or you?
They were to use it for surveillance cameras, they could have a few kids, it's like recording each of the law enforcement. That's if you get.
Oh, that's if you get to 2,000. If that's what you, is that gonna take enough to take care of that camera?
They're a little crazy. It's about $6,000. So they're taking action.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, that bunch have done quite well out there, so anything we do to help them, we need to do that. I know that's in Roberts, Walden, they, they'd love that. I tell you, that thing is something else, the way they've taken off. I mean, Robert could tell you more.
It's a great fixture for the community over there. It really is. And I've got a kind of creative idea to address that, and we'll talk about it afterwards.
And yet, on O, the restricted fund for the MGM Park, what did, I didn't get a chance to read that. What are you doing with the restricted fund?
This, this is just a resolution allowing us to adjust the balance in the, in the restricted fund. That's the, the fund, the baseball fund, as we call it, that, that we use to do a lot of repairs at the stadium.
The maintenance of 25,000?
Right, there's 25,000 each, each year, and we've just finished a whole slew of projects, pre-seasoned, of projects, and we're adjusting the balance in the fund.
Okay. And the last one here, they, it's F on this, on this bid. I have a problem accepting a bid from anybody when they have the litigation against the city. So to me, until that litigation is solved, or the bid is written correctly, I just can't see how you can award this to anybody. Right, this is, this is. P? P. So me, and my thing is, to me, you'd have to order to the second best bidder, not somebody that's in litigation with the city.
I can address it now, or, we did consider that. There is actually case law that states if someone is, uh, someone has a right to challenge a contract or contest a contract, you can't, you can't specifically deny them the right to bid or accept a bid just because of the fact that there is pending litigation.
Well, what if, what if the requirements of the bid compel them to disclose that they're in litigation, and they failed to disclose that within the bid? Isn't that a deniable offense?
It, it depends on whether or not that's a material non-disclosure. Our other research indicated the reason for that requirement is to make sure they're not hiding a potential litigation situation from the city. Since we're in litigation or have a pending litigation with them, the city was definitely aware of that, I did undertake to investigate their other projects, anything else they've done over the past five years, to find out if there were any other litigation items or claims made with any of their other projects. Not only did we find there were none, we basically got, got good reviews from, from all the, the past customers, so.
Do you want to continue?
Go ahead.
I do have some concerns with the bid itself. If you have one with you, do you have a copy of the bid? Will you flip to page 22 of the bid?
Councilman? I'm not satisfied with that answer, though. Can I, will you allow me a second?
Absolutely. I'd love, go ahead, delve into it.
So the bid requires them to disclose if they're in any litigation, correct?
Right. And they did, there's a questionnaire that states, among other things, are you in any litigation?
All right, and that wasn't answered honestly, correct?
Well, it was not answered correctly.
Okay, so you asked me if I'm in litigation, I tell you no, and I'm bidding on a major bid, that's pretty significant, is it not? I mean, if I'm applying for a job and they ask me, are you in any litigation, I say no, and I get the job. You know, it just, it just does logically, that seems like a big, big red flag to me.
The, um, the other concerns are, there were other things that were, can you tell us about some of the other things that were overlooked?
Can I follow Kenny's?
Absolutely.
Sorry.
Excuse me. Everybody want a piece of this one?
I remember, well, I, I just remember that this, this contractor did two FEMA infrastructure projects in my ward. One was probably three, maybe four years ago. I think they finally closed the project. I don't even know if the project's closed. I think it is, I don't know the terminology, but I think that's one of the issues that we're in litigation with them about. It had to do with, the contention was, the pipe was not quality pipe. I guess in videoing the product, there, there were some leaks or whatever. But that project was on time to be completed, and then we, we got into this, everything stopped, and then later, the issues liquidated damages because they didn't want to take the pipe out, or they didn't want to repair the pipe. We kind of fiddled around with that. And I, I don't know, that may be what we're in litigation with them about now, dealing with liquidated damages, but.
We, we assessed the liquidated damages against them, and they were challenging that. So that, that is what litigation's about.
So then the, the next project they did was Balmoral in Edgewater Park, and the issue there wasn't as severe, relatively speaking. It was more about the grassing, and it just took, I mean, again, they, we finally closed out the project a year after it, it was finished, except for the grassing. They could have completed that. I mean, it's just, my, my experience is, it's like pulling teeth dealing with them. I don't know what anybody else's experience has been. But I'm also thinking, why in the world would we give somebody another contract, based on my experience, but if you're still quibbling with them about liquidated damages? And, and if that proj, I mean, that project was finished two or three years ago, and if it's, if, if that's what we're in litigation about, this just continues to drag on, why would we want to do business with somebody like that? It's a rhetorical question, but that, that's all I wanted to mention at this point.
Okay, George? One, one thing that was left out in that conversation was that since then, we have awarded them a rather sizable contract on Keesler Gate inside, which is two months ahead of schedule and with no issues. So, I mean.
No issues, no issues yet. I didn't vote for them for the exact reasons I gave here, but no issues yet. The past track record is, if it's any indication, is we're gonna have issues before it's done. I hope not, but.
Well, there's no indication that that's the case, but.
Mr. Leonard, on that contract, was there a questionnaire that asked them, were there any, any litigation?
Same, same standard form that we put behind.
And did they, do you, do you know how they answered that question on that contract?
They, they left it blank, and, and we questioned it, and, and.
So they neither answered yes or no on that one?
Gave them a pass, yeah.
Okay, all right.
So the, the point was, we'd given them a pass on the same administrative error in the past, and it was not a, a cha, a material change to the bid, the low bid.
One other thing we look at when we're trying to determine, I mean, the, the council has discretion to determine what's material and what's not material. When we're looking at this overall, we're trying to determine, first of all, the lowest bid, as far as the taxpayers and all are concerned, that generally always has a standard of being upheld, that in our bid requirements, we say informalities can be waived, and it's done, the city has the right to waive informalities. Over the years, things like turning in the full spec book, that has been waived in the past, and is not typically performance-based, as opposed to someone saying, I don't like their work. So the two informalities we're dealing with, turning in the, the entire spec book back as opposed to the bid, I don't think any of the low three turned in the entire book. They turned in, the other two turned in portions of the book. But that's not a performance-based thing, that is more or less an informality in my view, and could be waived if we want this to be the low bid. The questionnaire, again, is something we have knowledge of, and we ask them to, if they wanted to explain it, they've submitted that letter, and that's their position on explaining it, that it was not an intent to deceive, and it's an informality that should be waived.
Well, what would, what do you think the odds are, if they bid on another project, that they won't disclose or answer the question whether we're there in litigation with somebody or not? Based on their past track record? It's another rhetorical question.
Well, it's a difference to me if they submitted on a Gulfport job and said none, and then Gulfport wouldn't have the knowledge that we have, that, is that an oversight? It may not be very smart to say no to somebody that you're in litigation with, 'cause they're gonna know about it. But that's, that to me is more of an oversight than if it was a different city or county that would know about it.
What confounds me about that is that Mr. Leonard just testified that this had happened in a previous account. So we had to question them on this same issue on a previous bid, and yet they failed to do it again. That almost proves the intent. If you just, maybe luckily we'll overlook it, so the council doesn't consider that. I, I disagree that this is an informality, because we're in a different city, and even if we're in litigation with them, we should know. They failed to disclose that. We called them on it the first time, and they continued to fail to disclose it. Kenny?
So, so I agree with you that it could be an informality, but they should answer it correctly, and then we should weigh the, weigh the facts of it and make a decision. So I, I just think it carries a lot more weight when you have a questionnaire. So I, I just think it carries a lot more weight when you have a questionnaire specifically asking questions on a significant monetary contract, and you don't complete it. That's just, it, it gives me some pause. It really does.
And that's why we did give them an opportunity to clarify, and that's Exhibit C, the letter that's part of the package.
So my question is, the last couple of years, Mike, since you've been here, you've tried to put everything in line, do everything the right way, and make everything right. And so we can't sit there and accept something that's not right. Everything we've been doing, you've been doing a consult with everything, with all the people not paying, with system paying, that's been one of the big things, and that's you, being an old ex-marine, understand that. So we're not going to accept something that's not right. If they didn't do it right, it's not right. You can't make it right, period. You do it the right way, or just don't do it at all. Simple enough to me.
Should we, should we toss out each bidder that did not conclude the entire book?
Well, that's what happens. You got what it was supposed to be.
It'll go to number four then.
Okay, then why'd you accept? It's the best, it's the best bid, not always the lowest bid. It's the best bid. That's been in their game forever. It's been written like that for a reason. So you always just don't take the lowest bid. That's why it says lowest or best bid. And in this case, it's not.
I, I think a reasonable, the standard has to apply, Mr. Leonard. When you ask, should we throw out all of them? If you said that they, they submitted the portions of the book that were applicable, I think that's reasonable. But to continue to fail to disclose something, I don't, I don't believe that's reasonable. If anybody else has an issue with the procedure, please carry with it. But I have some questions with the substance. So I'll allow the procedural questions to go before I get into the substance.
Well, the, the only, the only thing I'd say is, if there's a procedure, we should be consistent in that procedure.
Okay, if we do that, I'll just, I'm going to lay it out for you. If we go to the, the first lowest bidder that met all of the administrative requirements, it's a million dollars. That's the number four bidder, higher than, because each of the others, one, two, and three, didn't do what, didn't include the entire spec book, which was what we asked for.
Again, basis, base.
So.
You know, it's, you know, there are two sides to yea or nay on this particular issue. And if it is nay on this issue and, and goes to the second bidder, the original knee case will probably be suing us too. So that's the, that's the decision we have, whether it's material or not material. If it's not material, then we've got to go forward with knee case. If it is material in your estimation, then we're going, we're going to face what we need to face, you know, one way or the other. We've got a decision to make.
Well, I, I'll tell you, my position on this is, I wasn't happy with knee case before. I still can't support them on this issue. I'll just leave it at that.
Robert? Any other questions on this?
Yeah. I do.
There's the first bidder that turned in both requirements.
Yeah, I'm good.
I, I am not a construction person, so I just look at this and see, when I go through it, I don't, I can't look at it for accuracy, because I don't have the prerequisite knowledge. However, when something stands out to me, it gives me a question for concern. So if you flip to page 22 of the actual, of the, of the estimated bid, and we're looking at the, at the different line items for the cost and the price per unit, we, you know, we go from $18 to $35 per linear foot, $51 per linear foot, then we get over to, to 907-610-D, and it's, it's 14 linear feet at $40,500 per linear foot for, for what appears to be an iron sewer forced main pipe. Now, I, I don't, I don't know if that's what they cost. Can I actually get some? What it looks like to me is that's a bid fluff, or that's an unbalancing of the bid, so they can prevent overages on anything else they bid for, to keep their bid down and not lose money. And if everything stays low, then they get a windfall. That's what it looks like to me. Can someone address what that 14 feet is and why that's over half a million dollars for, for 40-something thousand square, or 40,000 linear feet?
So it's for, that's all iron sewer land. Other, not considered.
Can you have a mic, get a mic?
Yes.
So with that item, if you average all the other bidders, except for knee case on that one specific item, they average around $320, $350 a linear foot. We have had, my staff had had discussions with.
Wait, 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 wait.
Say that again?
$320 a linear foot. This one's 41,000.
Correct. And we had discussions, my staff had discussions with the contractor to ask them why that apparent obvious outlier. And my staff was told that it was a problem with their software, how it addressed it when they put the proposals together, and that we would have the potential to negotiate if awarded to a more fair or reasonable cost per linear foot.
What that sounds like to me, yeah, it does, it sounds like an excuse to get the bid. I, I think that they should come back with a reasonable price, they want to win the bid. I, I think that's outrageous, that we're going to accept a bid where they, they use this mechanism to, to defraud the city based off the other bids, and then tell us, well, we can come back and kind of talk about that if we want to, once we win the bid. I, there's no way I can support, support accepting this bid. I, I have nothing further.
George?
Well, it would be to our benefit if they agreed to negotiate.
Well, let's get them to, let's, you know, if, if that's the real price, then why don't we just have them, why don't we just have them rebid at the real price? And then it would come back lower, it'd be the same thing as getting them to negotiate. Let's put the, the, the market pressures of competition on them and make them give us a fair and accurate bid. Then we really know where we stand.
That's an option. It's, it would delay the project, and, you know, we're, as, the more we delay these projects, obviously.
How much will it delay the project? How much time would it delay to start the project?
How much time do you have to give for someone to have a bid? I mean, why not just rebid the whole job?
If you're to re-advertise, if you're to prove to re-advertise, you've got to run the advertisements for at least two weeks in the, in the local papers, then you've got to wait 15 days, business days after which to open. You review the bids, make sure there aren't any more irregularities or concerns. You bring it back before council, whether it's at a regular council meeting or y'all have a special meeting. So you're talking 30 minimum days, possible, just for the advertisement in the period, and at least probably another five to 10, 15 days after that, depending on y'all's schedule.
Thank you, Walt. I would urge my council members to join in, in my efforts and allow this to be extended for 60 days to get this right. I think that we can, I think we can allow 45 days.
I, I still got a question. How is this lowest and best bid when you have something like this that is abnormal?
Just under the law, we can't, let's say they, if their bid is incorrect, we can't negotiate that number down, because they're the lowest bid. The bid, I mean, that's under the bid statute. Like what Walt is saying is, down the road, as part of a change order, that could be negotiated. But I mean, they are the low bid, even with that.
But it's lowest and bid, lowest and best counselor, and I, I don't know how, if I was looking at this, how I would consider this lowest and best when it might do something. You know, we don't have a guarantee where maybe the other bids, we know what we're looking at as far as what is, what is in our best interest.
How, how much did, was the average, you said, on that line item?
It was around 320 to 350, if you, the other six.
About 15,000 compared to 480.
Here's the problem, and, and I don't feel like.
Per linear foot.
So if you, if you really take the, the full totality of this circumstance into account, this, in my opinion, is more like a fraudulent bid. Because if they were still 2% under all the other bidders, with this one item highly inflated, that means they deflated every other line item they had. They made that so low that it wasn't even competitive with the other people. That way, they could still come in and have a big gap for a windfall. It's easier to take money out of a bid or a job than it is to put money into it. And this is why they do that. And so every, if you, if you audited the other ones at those line items, I guarantee you, theirs is going to come in substantially lower. It has to. If they exacerbated that one charge, and it still came in 2% below the others, there's no way the other, the other ones can be realistic charges.
Well, we did look into that, and there was no, there was no major item of concern related to the average between knee case and the others, except for this one outstanding. There were some differences among the first low, the first three lowest bidders. They all had some numbers that were, but you know, contractors bid, they're just estimates. Contractors bid in ways that they, because they know the projects. So we did look at all the other line items for knee case compared to the others, and there was nothing that I would feel uncomfortable with as far as a bid line item costs. This one is obviously jumps out at you, plus the other items that were discussed prior to me coming up here.
But just by way of example, I mean, you're, you're looking at that one, but go down seven lines for the temporary forced main. There's one quantity there. They bid 171,000. Lane has 402,000, Hemp Hill 300,000.
So you're talking about, you're talking about aggregate totals for those line items? I'm talking about price per linear foot. We're talking about the average cost of $320 versus 41,000 per linear foot. That is.
12 times the price.
100,000 percent more? I mean, it's ridiculous. That's something that's so out of the ordinary, that it makes everything on that paper unbelievable. And it, I just, I.
I could suggest in this, to me, this bid needs to be denied. You can't give them the opportunity to come back and redo anything. This bid too far out of line, it's too many red flags, too many things weren't done right. This bid just needs to be denied.
If you can't do the small things right, how are you going to do the big things right?
Period.
It's not one thing, it's like multiple items.
I have a question. What is, what is our history with, with this company? Do we have a pass with this company outside of that one issue that we have a litigation, litigation with?
The most current, you know, as, as Mike talked about, the, the inside the gate, that's, I guess, the most recent.
Well, we all, they also have the Eagle Point up in Woolmarket, and they're, they're ahead of schedule on that project. It's, it's a small project, 1.3 million, but they are ahead on that project, according to their schedule. The past experiences we've had with them, was prior to me coming on board with the city, when I came on board, the issues of some of these outstanding projects that had not been closed out, were some of the first issues I tackled, not just this contractor, but other contractors that had not, you know, finished out their work. And it was just outstanding items that we needed to get done.
I think their primary work that, when I talked to their past, their main client was Port. They did, done a lot of work at the state port of Gulfport. They're doing the DMR Outfall Project that's getting ready to get started at Bellman for those outfalls.
Yeah, but that wasn't our history with them.
That's true.
Their history with them in Woolmarket wasn't a quick project. That was behind and delayed. The last one with the Paulson and the Two Streets here was the problem. So in it, we, I don't care what they did in Gulfport, the history with us has not been that good. So my recommendation still is to deny this.
Well, I, I would like to go on the record and say I have nothing, I have no problem with any of the knee cases, or even their quality of work. That's not what's at issue for me. What's at issue for me is just the substance of this bid, and, and that's all. I don't, I don't want to take anything away from what knee case has done in the past, whether it was good or bad. I'm sure that they're just like anyone else that tries to get their jobs done on time and do, you know, an exceptional level of quality, so they can retain future work. It's just this bid is unacceptable. That's the only thing I have an issue with, with regard to knee case.
I agree with Councilman Demming, and like I said earlier, you know, we're asking to consider a resolution put before this council, and one of the criteria is to accept the lowest and best bid. I don't think it falls under the best bid, in my opinion, reviewing the, the information before us. It may be the lowest at this point, but it's not even, it's questionable whether it will be the lowest when the job is completed. And I can't support the resolution either.
Okay. George, you have the show. We, um.
So I'll make the recommendation. I'll move it. That would deny it.
Well, we're not, we can, we can vote on it afterwards, because we've got to consent.
We can pull this and vote on this now.
We've got to consent. We'll vote on it on the consent. Do you have any more questions on the consent agenda?
No.
Okay. Ms. Newman, you have?
Well, you know, at, at this point, you've got two options, and I think either rebid it, or accept the next acceptable bid. Right? And what, what is the acceptable bid? We may have, you know, some other issues.
Do we have, do we have an acceptable in the second bid?
And third, and fourth?
It, it starts getting into the, it gets legal, it gets into the interpretations of what proposal requires.
We've had other, our construction employ, you know, you know, legal counsel also reviewed this particular situation, so.
So Mr. Mayor, and, and Mr. Abide, the question I guess I should pose to you is, do you think it would be in our best, it's pretty clear that this isn't going to pass. Would it be, if it doesn't pass, would it be in our better interest to rebid this or take the second bid?
See, I don't think that's the right thing to do. Well. I mean, these people bid, three of them, I mean, you had three bidders? I mean, this, the, the first one is not acceptable? Fine, then you accept the second one. You go from there, for me.
Well, right now, we got a, we got a consent agenda on the table, and, and we got a chance to vote it up or down. If we vote it down, we can throw it back out there and let them, and, and ask the administration to rebid the contract, or go to the next one.
I, I honestly think we should rebid.
I think we shouldn't rebid it also, but let's go ahead and vote on it.
Can I make a motion to take this off the count, the consent agenda, and vote on it separately?
Okay.
I move to remove this from the consent agenda, to vote on it separately.
Second, second by Mr., got a, it's moved by Mr. Demming, second by Mr. Glavin. Any questions on this?
Are we going to?
No questions, counsel? We're going to vote on it separately.
Okay. So my most words are denied.
Well, he wants to vote on it separately. We're, we're removing it.
Oh, so you're going to do the consent?
Okay, all in favor of voting on it separately? Okay.
You, George?
Yeah. Okay. Seven, zero. Motion, Kerry. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and go through the rest of the consent agenda.
The motion was to suspend the rules to approve it, to vote on it separately.
Yes.
Now we need to vote on it separately.
Vote on it separately, okay. Um, okay, we're getting ready to vote on it. You're going to move to?
It's argument moved.
I move to deny.
Move in second. Are they going to vote on, or we want to vote it up or down?
Right.
Okay.
Motion to deny. By Mr. Morris.
Can I ask a question?
I need to, I need to put it on the table. I need somebody to.
It's, it's on the table.
Huh?
I did that.
It's on the table.
It's on the table to approve.
It's on the table to approve.
So we deny it.
I'm denying it.
Okay.
Vote against it, it fails.
All right, got you, got you. All right. Any more questions before we, before we vote?
Peter.
So we voted to deny it, we have to do one.
What do you recommend on this? Would you recommend a denial or a rebid?
I think, I think you vote it up or down, and then you can decide what to do next, either to, either to, and we probably may need a week or so to, we may need to table the issue to decide, but the problem with just automatically accepting the next bid is, as opposed to rebidding everything, is then you get into the inspector general saying, well, why didn't you, you could have saved this amount of money, why didn't you rebid?
I don't think we need to table this, this needs to be denied. Nobody's in favor of this.
Mr. President, I think we need a vote to deny, and then let the administration take whatever action they need going forward and come back to the council once they make a recommendation.
You got it. Any other questions from anybody else?
No, we're just going to deny it.
Okay, and I'll vote to deny, so we can rebid it. Okay, I'll, I'm going to call for a question, all in favor?
To deny?
To, all in favor for it?
It's a Florida pass.
All in favor to deny? I mean, all in favor for it, all against? Here we go. All in favor to deny? I mean, all in favor for it, all against? Here we go. Okay, seven, oh. That's against it. Motion fails.
I think you got that right.
All right, I'm going to go back to the consent agenda.
I'm done.
You're done. Ms. Newman, you have anything? Mr. Demming?
I do have.
Dr. Tisdale?
Yes, on item J, this is the Net Motion Software. And we've got a cost of $11,750, which is basically for two years, and then we automatically renew it a year at a time. I'm assuming the cost would be about half of that, or 5,500. Okay, thank you.
That's it, Dr. Tisdale? Okay, Mr. Glavine? Mr. Barrett? And also have none. I'm going to call for the questions. I'll take the nays, second. All in favor of the consent agenda? Okay, seven, zero. Any nays? Mr. Lawrence?
No.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Demming? Dr. Tisdale? Mr. Glavine?
No.
Mr. Barrett? Okay, none. Consent agenda passed, seven, zero. I need a motion on the, nope. Oh, we got code enforcement here, Mr....
Make a word of the second, second, and see if we can get sued.
Ms. Crell?
Item A on the agenda, Harrison Hall, 262 Brown Street. This property is still in violation. Not secured, no. And that's what we're asking to do, is to secure the main structure and to demolish the shed. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of all Harrison? Is anyone here to speak on behalf of all Harrison's? We consider that matter closed. Item B on the agenda is Charles O. and Cindy L. Crone. It's 10373 Wool Market Lake Road. This property is still in violation.
speak on behalf of the Wool Market Lake property? We're going to consider it.
Ask a question.
Okay.
We extended this. Have done nothing?
No, sir. There's a bank involved in this, Federal Savings and Loan, and I've had communication with them. Their main concern was that we were not going to demolish the house, and the house is not a part of this code case. But they agreed to let us go ahead and clean up everything else, and then just add it back to the taxes.
All right. Bye. Well, consider that matter closed. Thank you, Ms. Crell. Need a motion on routine, agenda? So moved. Moved by Dr. Tisdale. Need a second?
Second.
I'll second it. George, you have any questions?
Yeah, how about our financial update, please? So you're still waiting? Everything's still on time, though. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor? Six, zero. Motion carried. Need a motion to recess?
No move.
Second by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. All in favor? Six, zero. Motion carried. Meeting closed.